Thank you so much for joining us for our Durham County Board of Commissioners regular session this Monday, June 9th. I will get us started with the public charge. The Board of Commissioners asks its members and residents to conduct themselves in a respectful courteous manner, both with the board and fellow residents. At any time, should any member of the board or any resident fail to observe this public charge, the chair will ask the offending person to leave the meeting until that individual regains personal control. Should decorum fail to be restored, the chair will recess the meeting until such time that a genuine commitment to the public charge is observed. Commissioner Valentine, would you like to read the land acknowledgement?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair. So, as we convene for the Durham County Commissioners' meeting, it's crucial to recognize the painful truth of history. We stand on the stolen ancestral lands of the Kotaba, the Ino, the Okanichi, the Shakora, and the Tuscarora peoples, whose deep connection to this land predates our arrival. We acknowledge with humility the unjust displacement and violence that occurred, leading to the dispossession of indigenous peoples from their homelands. Their resilience in the face of such adversity is a testament to their strength and their spirit. May we humbly honor the ancestors and elders of these nations, both past and present, by committing ourselves to fostering understanding, healing, and justice for all who inhabit this land. Let us walk forward together with open hearts, acknowledging the past and embracing a future guided by compassion, respect, and unity.
Thank you, Commissioner Valentine. I'll ask Commissioner Jacobs, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobs. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Burton, second by Commissioner Vice Chair Dr. Lee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved. Now pass it to Clerk Wallace for announcements.
Good evening. I read the announcements published in tonight's agenda. Most Durham County government offices will be closed on Thursday, June 19th, for the Juneteenth holiday. Our offices will open with normal business hours on Friday, June 20th. For impacts to certain services, please visit dconc.gov. Join Durham County Government as we commemorate the 25th anniversary of the Durham County Firearms Injury Prevention Partnership on Wednesday, June 18th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Human Services Building, located at 414 East Main Street. This milestone event honors a quarter century of dedicated collaboration, community engagement, and life-saving impact in the effort to reduce firearm injuries and promote safety across Durham. There is a link for registration. The Board of Elections will host free North Carolina voter photo identification card outreach events for registered Durham County voters throughout 2025. Each month, staff will be at one of the Durham County libraries to distribute free IDs, assist with voter registration, and answer any questions. Join us at South Regional Library, 4505 South Austin Avenue, on Saturday, June 21st, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. For additional information, you can visit dcovotes.dcoenc.gov. And lastly, Durham is work... Durham is working on creating a new Unified Development Ordinance, UDO, which sets the rules for development as a part of implementing the new comprehensive plan. You can view recordings on the proposed content, read engagement materials, submit an online survey, or add comments on the proposed zoning plan. You can visit engagedurham.com to learn more and provide your feedback. There were additional announcements, but I will wait for those that will be receiving proclamations and resolutions to share that information this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Wallace. Are there additional announcements from the board? Commissioner Jacobs?
Just two quick announcements. I just wanted to give a shout out to Durham County staff for some amazing events that happened over the past week. One was the opioid town hall settlement, led by our opioid manager, Jason Smith, who did an amazing job. And we heard from a lot of other staff in public health and EMS, presenting on some great programs that are helping people who are suffering from opioid use disorder. And then yesterday was a wonderful... No, wait, was it Saturday? I'm getting mixed up on the day. Yesterday was World Hunger Day. I was there, and I'm forgetting. That Raina Goldstein-Bunag, who is our food security coordinator, did a great job of coordinating. And we had hundreds of people in Central Park learning about all the different resources that we have in Durham to help people, and especially around food security. So I just want to give a shout out to our wonderful Durham County staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobs. Now that brings us to our minutes. We have our May 27th Board Minutes for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Valentine, second by Commissioner Burton. Any discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. And now we have our ceremonial items. First, beginning, I see Shannon is walking to the podium from our budget team, the presentation for the fiscal year 2025-26 Durham County Budget Book Art Contest.
Good evening, Commissioners, County Attorney, and Madam Manager. My name is Shannon Wright, and I am with the Budget Office. And this fiscal year, we did run a Budget Book cover contest where we asked youth in the county to submit their cover contest on what they most enjoyed about living in Durham. And we had many submissions, and through that, we selected Zora Williams. She's a sixth grader at Rogers Air Middle School, and we are here to celebrate her this evening. If you guys can come up.
Miss Manager, real quick, I'd like to point out to the family and the young lady who did our work that this is forever. I hope she will come back in 20 to 30 years. She may have never left, but if she does, she can show her family that this document was her artwork, and it will always be there. So it's a permanent part of Durham history, and we thank you for that. And real quick, I just wanted to thank Shannon Wright and our office. She's the one who created this, thought about it, and pushed it. And we thought it was a great way to do some community outreach. So thank you, Shannon.
Congratulations again. Thank you so much for submitting your artwork and showcasing so many places that we all love and cherish here in Durham County, and that are funded by all of you. Our next item is that we have a resolution for Women's Veterans Day 2025. And we have Helen from the Department of Veteran Services.
Turned it off. Good evening, everyone. To the Commissioners, County Manager, County Attorney, and to our Assistant County Manager, Hall. We're always grateful in Veteran Services to be able to come before this body and to receive a proclamation. We recognize all of our veterans, whether they are active duty, guard, or reserve. And I think the time has long passed where we pay special attention to our women veterans. So I'm very excited to be able to stand on behalf of our department here in Durham County to introduce Jonathan Croomes, who would also introduce Haylene, who are spearheading this inaugural event that's going to take place this coming Thursday. Jonathan has shown great leadership, he and Haylene working together. And we hope this will be an annual event, and we're looking forward to... So I don't want to take her thunder, so I'm gonna let him come, share his greetings, and he will introduce her, and she could share some remarks.
Good evening, Commissioners. As Lindsay said, it is always an honor to come before you. In the eight years that I have been a Veteran Service Officer, I have had the blessing and honor to hear the stories of many of our women who have served and to be able to advocate before them, before, for them, before the United States Department of Veterans Affairs for their benefits. Our women do incredible things in military service, and they also face some very unique challenges. So it's only right that we now, as a department, create a special event to recognize their service and to also recognize the challenges they face. I'd like to introduce the driving force behind this event, Navy Veteran and Veteran Service Officer, Haylen Juarez Ruiz.
Good evening, Commissioners, County staff, and citizens. My name is Haylen Juarez Ruiz, and I am a proud United States Navy veteran and the Veteran Service Officer with Durham County Veteran Services. I stand before you today filled with gratitude and driven by a deep commitment to advocate on behalf of women veterans. For the first time in our department's history, Durham County Veteran Services will host Women's Veterans Recognition Day on June 12th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in Admin 2, Conference Room 466. This event celebrates the contribution of women veterans to the U.S. Armed Forces and the defense of our nation. The year 2025 marks the 77th anniversary of the Women's Armed Services Integration Act. This pivotal piece of legislation transformed the landscape for women in the armed forces, allowing us to serve in permanent positions beyond the confines of nursing. Prior to this act, our ability to serve was often temporary and bound to times of national crisis. The Women's Armed Services Integration Act opened the doors for us women to showcase our abilities, resilience, and unwavering dedication to our nation. Yet, despite this law, the contribution of women had often been overlooked, both in the military and in our nation's history. the military and in our nation's history, leaving our voices silenced. In this event, we will highlight stories that have been long silenced, including my story, as the first Mexican Native woman in my family to have served in the United States Navy. I take imminent pride in my service and carry a profound responsibility to inspire change. My journey embodies the strength of women who strive to uphold the values of honor, courage, and commitment to our Constitution. During the program, three remarkable women veterans, Jasmine Lubin, Patricia Blackwell, and Charisma Brock, will share their experience in the military and discuss navigating civilian life as a veteran. By sharing these narratives, we empower each other as women to claim our rightful place in our nation's history. The bonds we forge remind us that we are never alone and that our community fosters healing, growth, and a sense of pride. As Thursday approaches, we at Durham County Veteran Services are super excited. We care gratefully for our support, we, sorry, we are grateful for your support as our County Commissioners. This proclamation that you have approved will be read during our program. We would not serve, we would not be able to serve our veterans in the way that we do or host this incredible event without your support. We also wish to thank the Triangle Women Veteran Post 144, Ms. Bernie Donato, who is here in representation, and the Military Board, led by Congresswoman Valerie Fushi's office, Mr. Isaac Johnson is here, for always inspiring to support us. Both organizations aspire to create a vibrant event where women veterans and the community could unite, share their experiences, and celebrate their extraordinary resilience. In closing, I hope that Durham County Veteran Services inaugural Women Veterans Recognition Day will be a beacon of strength and resilience for women like me who have served in the military. Let us always celebrate the remarkable contribution of women veterans and the women in our community as we build a future filled with hope, strength, and unity. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your service to our country and as well as highlighting and advocating for all of the women service members. And thank you for all of the work that the Veteran Services Office does to support our Durham County residents who have sacrificed so much for our safety and well-being. Thank you. Our next, we have a-
Madam Chair.
Yes.
May I?
Yes.
So let me just say, I look forward to this very seminal event, first time in Durham County's history that will be recognizing women. And I actually would like to recognize one, right, right here today, Brigadier General Jeanette Edmonds, the first woman to ever command the 13th COSCOM at Fort Hood, Texas. And I had the great honor of having her commission me into the United States Army. And so hats off to Brigadier General Jeanette Edmonds.
Thank you, Commissioner Valentine. We next have a proclamation for World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, that we have Director, is Director Clapp here? Or someone from DSS? Will we have, oh, there's, yes.
Hi, thank you for recognizing this on behalf of Durham DSS.
Thank you so much. I know you guys have, if you wanted to highlight some of the work-
Sure, I'm gonna have Travis Williams, my Assistant Director of Aging and Adult Services, speak.
Good evening, Commissioners. As Assistant Division Director of Aging and Adult Services here, I just wanted to highlight the need for us to ensure that we're always being vigilant about making sure that we're reporting any signs of abuse to our seniors. And we're using this day to make that known, that we want to make sure everyone is aware that anyone can come in and report that abuse, report it as soon as possible, because we value our seniors and it's very important that we, excuse me, it's very important that we do that timely and quickly so that we can make sure that our seniors are safe and independent in their homes. Thank you.
Thank you so much for all of the DSS staff members and your team for this important and vital work.
Thank you very much.
And now we have a proclamation celebrating Juneteenth 2025, as well as proclamation for Pride that Dr. Lewis is gonna come forward for.
Good evening, Commissioners, Madam Manager, and our County Attorney. Thank you for the proclamation for Juneteenth and for Pride Month. I want to acknowledge and highlight a couple of events that are happening in the community. I will acknowledge that the flag raising event happened last week for Juneteenth, as well as there is an event by Spectacular Magazine next, on June 21st, for Juneteenth. And that is happening at NCCU on June 21st that we have also contributed to from the county. In addition, for Pride Month, we are having an event called Deco Does Pride on June 28th from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. in the Health and Human Services Building that's hosted by Public Health, and that is a resource fair. I will also acknowledge that Pride Month in Durham is mostly celebrated in September. So if you don't see a lot of Pride events happening around the local community, that is because the parade and other events actually happen in September. But you will also see a lot of Pride events happening in Raleigh. If you go over to Raleigh, a lot of those local events will be happening in our community. But on behalf of Equitable Wellbeing, our residents, and our employees, thank you for acknowledging and the awareness of both Pride Month and Juneteenth. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Lewis. And yes, we here in Durham just love to stretch out Pride as long as possible to keep the celebration going. Commissioner Burton, then Commissioner Jacobs.
Yes, I just want to say that we went to the flag raising last week at the Durham County Courthouse, and it was just a wonderful event to raise that flag, to celebrate Juneteenth. And really, another thing that I enjoyed was learning about the true history of Juneteenth, when the United States colored troops went into Galveston, Texas in 1865 to deliver the message that, you know, enslaved people were free, even though they already knew, but there was no federal troops to enforce it. So it was a really, really great event and I really enjoyed. Commissioner Jacobs, you read the 13th Amendment, so it was a great day. Thank you.
I also just want to say thank you to Brent and your team, our Department of Equitable Wellbeing, for lifting up these, celebrating these events, especially at a time in our country when people are trying to change history, erase history, and also are undermining and attacking the most vulnerable people in our community. So I'm very proud that our community does tell the true history of Juneteenth. Also, one of the things that I learned is that a lot of the Union troops were not doing well until the formerly enslaved soldiers actually joined the effort, and that was really a turning point in the Civil War. And also, as a proud mom, it's very important to me that our community supports everybody. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobs. And now we have a proclamation recognizing Durham Refugee Day. Do you have, Niall is here, our Durham City County Immigrant and Refugee Affairs Coordinator. Niall, can you come closer to the mic? And I want to just remind everyone that Durham Refugee Day is Saturday, June 21st, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Durham Central Park. And it's really an amazing and beautiful event if you're able to attend to see how diverse Durham County really is and all the different languages that's spoken, the food that's eaten across our Durham community. So please come out and celebrate Durham's diversity at our Durham Refugee Day, June 21st, 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. I'm gonna pass it to Commissioner Valentine for our next two items.
First, I'd like to take a moment of personal privilege and invite you all to meet one of the, or actually the Executive Vice Chancellor at the North Carolina Central University, Attorney Allen Goodson, who's with us here in the chamber. And also, I see the past president of the NCCU Alumni Association, Mr. Richard Smith, with us. And this resolution is to honor Dr. Kerry G. Dixon, who heads North Carolina Central University, which is the pillar of higher education in Durham County. And so this resolution for Dr. Kerry G. Dixon is as follows. Whereas, Dr. Kerry G. Dixon was named the 13th Chancellor of North Carolina Central University on June 6, 2024, and began her appointment on July 1, 2024. And whereas, prior to joining NCCU, Dr. Dixon served as the 7th Chancellor of Elizabeth City State University, and further holds the distinction of being the first woman to serve as Chancellor at two UNC system institutions. And whereas, Dr. Dixon earned a bachelor's degree from North Carolina State University, a master's degree from the University of North Carolina at Greensboro, and a doctorate from North Carolina State University. And whereas, Dr. Dixon is a highly engaged and respected leader in the higher education community and regarded for her strong portfolio of academic achievements and-
Whereas she maintains memberships in an impressive list of prestigious academic organizations, including the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Commission on Colleges, Board of Trustees, the Black Women Collegiate, Presidents and Chancellors, where she is a charter member, the North Carolina Campus Engagement Executive Board, and the Board of Directors of the American Association of State Colleges and Universities, to name a few. And whereas, her accolades and awards across her career are the envy of many, including the Old North State Award, the 10 Most Dominant HBCU Leaders of 2020, the prestigious William C. Friday Lifetime Achievement Award from the University of North Carolina Association of Student Governments, and the Presidential Lifetime Achievement Award for her leadership in higher education. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the Durham County Board of Commissioners, do hereby resolve to recognize Dr. Kerry G. Dixon, as she continues her tenure as North Carolina Central University's 13th Chancellor, we extend to her best wishes for a promising future filled with many years of significant and visionary leadership, empowering generations of successful students to make their work in various disciplines across the globe. This, the 9th day of June 2025. Sign it, Alom Chair, Dr. Mike Lee, Vice Chair, Michelle Burton, Commissioner, Wendy Jacobs, Commissioner, Stephen Valentine, Commissioner.
So, good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for this prestigious honor. Dr. Dixon actually serves, as mentioned earlier, she serves on the SACCLC Board, the board that accredits colleges and universities around the country. She is a Board of Trustees member and she's away in Houston today, presenting and reviewing the strength of universities and their compliance with those accreditation standards. So she is a very busy, very busy chancellor, but I'm here to send thank you from her and to thank the board for its continued support and partnership. While this proclamation certainly serves and recognizes her first year of service, it represents much more. This serves as a powerful testament of the bond between NCCU and the Durham community. And under Chancellor Dixon's leadership, that bond will continue to flourish. I want to recognize some alums that are here today. Eagle pride. And I see, we also have a legal eagle that serves as the county attorney, so we are everywhere. We're soaring high. And Chancellor Dixon, again, I want to thank you all for this recognition, and Chancellor Dixon thanks you for this recognition as well.
And in addition to our attorney Williamson being an eagle, our county clerk is also an attorney. It's also a graduate from NCCU. I'm giving you a whole degree. And Tammy.
So the next resolution is in honor of Dr. John Harding Lucas, Sr. We're honoring Dr. Lucas this evening for his many years of service to our nation in uniform, to our state, and to Durham County. I have in the chamber this evening a few of Dr. Lucas's fraternity brothers. He's a proud member of Omega Sci-Fi, Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity Incorporated. Would you please stand? Kamani Simmons is the bossless of that great chapter, Beta Phi, here locally. Is Cheryl in the chamber? We have Dr. Lucas's daughter. Cheryl, it's so good to see you this evening. Thank you for being with us. So whereas, Dr. John Harding Lucas, Sr., was born in Rocky Mountain, North Carolina in 1920, and made his transition on March 31st, 2025, at the incredible age of 104. And whereas, nurtured by loving parents, Reverend John Williams Lucas and Rebecca Bowles Lucas, who pursued academic success by attending Shaw University, New York University, and North Carolina Central University, receiving a BS and master's degrees as he advanced his teaching and educational administration career in various communities. And whereas, he served in the United States Army in the Pacific during World War II between 1944 and 1947, achieving the rank of Staff Sergeant. And whereas, his marriage to the love of his life, Landola Powell Lucas produced two amazing children, one of- the love of his life, Landola Powell Lucas produced two amazing children, one of who was with us here today, Cheryl and John Jr., and lovingly endured 67 years until her transition in 2012. And whereas, Dr. Lucas served his community, state, and nation with memberships in a broad array of organizations, including Durham City School Board, the Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated, North Carolina Association of Educators, Shaw University Board of Trustees, White Rock Baptist Church, where he served as the Chair of the Deacon Board, Weaver McLean, American Legion Number 175, and...
Whereas during his legendary career, many awards and recognitions were received, including lifetime member of the National Education Association, the NEA, and the North Carolina Association of Educators, NCAE Boards, the North Carolina Award, the Highest North Carolina Civilian Award, National School Boards, Lifetime Achievement Award, the NEA Trent Holmes Civil Rights Award, Doctor of Humane Letters from Shaw University, and many more. And whereas, we pause to honor the life and legacy of Dr. John Harding Lucas, Sr., who dedicated his talents to serving residents of the Durham community, the state of North Carolina, and the nation as a gifted teacher, principal, educational administrator, mentor, pioneering leader in the era of school desegregation, interim president of Shaw University, civic leader, and more. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the Durham County Board of Commissioners, do hereby resolve to pay tribute to Dr. John Harding Lucas, Sr., a great man who lived a life filled with service, compassion, excellence, and success. We call upon all citizens of Durham County to remember his tenacity and educational acumen, and how his lifetime of achievements approved the quality of life for generations to come. His legacy lives on in all who knew him. Be it further resolved that the Durham Board of County Commissioners call on the residents of Durham County to join in reflecting on and advancing Dr. Lucas's legacy and realizing his dream. This day, this 9th day of June 2025, knit Alom Chair, Dr. Mike Lee, Vice Chair, Michelle Burton, Commissioner, Wendy Jacobs, Commissioner, and Stephen Valentine, Commissioner.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Needless to say, this is a big surprise for me. But on behalf of the Lucas family, thank you to the Commissioners, the citizens of Durham, the people attending this evening. And if my amazing father were here, he would say, "Praise God from whom all blessings flow."
Thank you all so much. Commissioner Burton?
Yes, I just want to add that, you know, we talked about in the resolution that Dr. Lucas was a member of the National Education Association, the North Carolina Association of Education. He was very instrumental in the merger of the American Teachers Association, that was the Black Teachers Association Union, and the National Education Association. This merger occurred in the late 60s, as well as the merger of the North Carolina Teacher Association, which was an all-black Teachers Association Union, and the North Carolina Education Association. He was so revered in these organizations that he had a permanent board seat on both boards until his death. And I just wanted to share that because, as many of you know, I served as President of the Durham Association of Educators, and I also served on the Board of Directors for NCAE, and I see some DAE members in here. He was a true legend, and he was a true leader. So, thank you so much.
I'll also add, we have a school named after him, Lucas Middle School. And his story is there, his history is there. My twins just finished 8th grade from there. And I got to meet him once, you know, when I was on the school board. So this is really an honor to hear you all read this and to sign off on this. So congratulations.
Commissioner Jacobs, then Valentine?
I just want to say, first of all, to Dr. Lucas's daughter, my deepest sympathies, but thank you for sharing him with all of us. I first met him 12 years ago, and I can't think of another person who was not more full of life and always young, not just in heart, but in mind and physically, I mean vibrant in every way. So it's really hard to think about him not being a part of our community, and what an incredible life. So, thank you.
So Cheryl, thank you for being with us here today. It means a lot to me, and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, if I had my brother stand one more time, as a proud member myself of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated, thank you for sharing your father with us.
Thank you so much. That concludes our ceremonial items and moves us over to consent agenda. Are there any items that the Board would like to pull? Commissioner Jacobs?
I do not want to pull anything, but I did just have a quick question about something that was new on our agenda, and I don't want to pull it. Can I just ask a question about it?
Yes. Do you want to wait till we make the motion, then during discussion?
Sure.
Okay.
That's fine.
Is there a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Move by Commissioner Jacobs, second by Vice Chair Dr. Lee, and then further discussion, Commissioner Jacobs, if you want to...
Yes. Item number 25-0315, which is for the contract to do the Durham Bus Rapid Transit Vision Plan. I don't know if our county transportation manager or staff is here. Maybe not. I'm looking around the room, and I don't. Okay. Well, we, oh, we do have you here. Okay. Would love to just hear, first of all, this is super, super exciting that we are moving forward with this plan. And this is Curtis.
Yes, it is.
Yes, Curtis, thank you so much for being here. I was wondering how this would also involve, I think it was like five BRT routes that have actually been identified by NCDOT in their evaluation process. That includes Durham, which was very exciting as well.
So that is a great question. The FAST study looked at multiple routes across the triangle, not just including Durham County. And we intend on incorporating the findings into our study, but also revisiting them with a higher level of public engagement, and comparing that across other BRT quarters that were not studied in the FAST study, so that we can determine the right prioritization. The FAST study did not have public engagement, so that's something that this study will heavily lean into and incorporate into the ultimate recommendations.
Okay. And I also want to commend you all for the very detailed scope of work. Anybody can read it and understand exactly what everyone is going to be working on. So thank you so much for your great work.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. Then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is passed. One second. We have, well, I'm looking, our agenda, am I missing it? Or I don't see the area for public comments on here. But, so that's what I just realized.
So they actually pulled the items?
That's what I was like, sorry. So now we have our other business, the adoption of the FY 2025, '26 budget ordinance, and we have several comments for this item. So I'm going to call folks up five at a time. If you want to come line up by this podium, and everyone will have two minutes each to address the Board. So Sonia Tallheimer, Micah Tweetmeyer, Millie Rosen, Kristy Patterson, and Kathleen Osinski.
Hello, my name is Sonia Tallheimer, and I'm a 5th grade teacher at Lakewood Elementary. My address is 403 Bonner. This is my sixth year teaching in DPS. I have a Master's of Arts in Teaching from NC State. This year, for the first time, I received Master's Pay. It's been amazing. For those that don't know, that means I receive a 10% increase in my pay each month. For me, that's about $400 additional dollars per month. That money has allowed me to tutor less after school, to cover more of our household expenses when my partner is back in school, and to work less over the summer. For some of my coworkers, the Master's Pay money has been even more significant. It has allowed them to move to new apartments, to quit second jobs, to spend more time with their kids, to visit relatives who live far away. Unfortunately, at this moment, many of us, teachers and social workers, are once again feeling scared about pay cuts and broken promises. If the Board of County Commissioners does not fully fund the BOE's requested budget tonight, the DPS Board of Education is going to be put in a wildly challenging situation. We know that the Board of Ed is planning to restore Master's Pay for social workers next school year. That's fantastic and has been needed all year. We also know that one thing the Board is considering is cutting the Master's Pay percentage in half for everyone with a relevant Masters from post 2013, if the county doesn't fully fund their budget. Adding Master's Pay for social workers and interventionists is the right thing to do, and it's wrong to pit workers against each other. We need to restore Master's Pay for all who would have qualified prior to 2013 and pay all of us the typical additional percentage. And that requires fully funding the BOE's requested budget. One of my coworkers at Lakewood is moving from a pre-K EC classroom to a kinder classroom. She's really worried about how the budget cuts might impact her Master's Pay. She can't be here tonight, but she says, "I feel a lot of frustration due to putting in hard work to get my Masters and to finally be paid for it, to turn around to worry about it being cut into, especially because I'm changing career paths." Another friend, who is currently teaching in Wake, is considering moving back to teaching in Durham. However, she isn't willing to accept the job she's been offered until she knows if she'll be getting her full Master's Pay or not. We really need you all to find the money to fully fund the requested budget so that we can keep dedicated teachers, social workers, bus drivers, bus monitors, and IAs here in Durham.
And if you want to, you leave the podium, just leave the mic on for the next speaker.
Good evening, Micah Tweetmeyer, President, Durham Association of Educators. DPS's budget request is a request with cuts. Cuts to staffing, not enough EC supports for our students, cuts to Durham's commitment to our public schools. When our members met with many of the Board of Commissioners, you indicated that in your recommended budget, you shared with DPS where you would like DPS to spend the money on. For example, for Master's Pay and for certified pay increases. But if the budget is not fully funded, DPS can't actually fund what you hope they will fund. We're asking for you to fund the entire request so that the cuts don't go any deeper, and our students return to school with as many of the resources, the educators, transportation workers, custodians, and other supplies and resources that they need that we are truly capable of providing as a county. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Millie Rosen. I live in Durham, and I teach in Durham. This is my 11th year. Please forgive my casual appearance. We took the 7th graders to Wheels today, and it was awesome. And then we're sending them home for the summer. I am here to speak as part of the Durham Association of Educators, proud union member. First, I do want to appreciate that you've been able to, as far as I'm aware, commit a little bit more to the budget. That's really exciting. I'm here just to highlight what it will look like if we are not able to get the full amount that DPS has requested. As a, you know, regular, run-of-the-mill classroom teacher, right now, our classified staff are not being paid what they should be. I know that's an issue across all of North Carolina, and we do have a school board and a county commission that is dedicated to trying to up that. But they don't have that. They don't have pay stability. What that looks like for kids in classrooms is, for instance, in my school, we never know where breakfast and lunch is going to be. It results in, we have two cafeterias, so it results in a lot of walking across campus and losing time in class. We don't have enough custodians. There's always rooms that need to be cleaned that just, they can't get to. Custodians that are there are being asked to do a lot of extra duty that they can't cover. We don't have enough ECIAs. Those classrooms are really struggling. EC kids are being hit the hardest. EC staff is spread really thin. They have huge caseloads. I am in IEP meetings all the time, and I'm just a regular ed teacher, so I can't imagine how it feels for them. And as we all know, we don't have enough bus drivers and monitors. If we see more cuts, if we have to make cuts to Master's Pay, which is a worry, we're going to see more teachers leaving and fewer frontline positions or people with, who work directly with kids, like social workers, counselors, EC facilitators, and related service providers, not being able to stay in their jobs. And that's going to affect our most vulnerable populations. So I'm urging you to fully fund the DPS's budget request so we can best serve all of our students. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kristy Patterson. I am an EC Special Programs teacher at Carrington Middle School and the proud Vice President of the Durham Association of Educators. I am standing before you today to let you know how critical it is to please fully fund the request that we are asking. Now, I am standing in front of some amazing individuals who made history last year. So I already know that the education of our students is top priority for you. But right now, it is critical that we fund this because our most vulnerable population, which are our students, are at risk. And on top of that, our students with disabilities are more vulnerable than our neurotypical children. Are we operating under IDEA? Let's look at it from a law standpoint. Free and appropriate education. Appropriate. Am I providing appropriate education when we don't have enough bus drivers to properly get my students to class in order for them to get their services that are stated in their individual educational plans that they need in order to succeed? When the bus comes at 10:00 a.m. and my reading class starts at 9:00 a.m., they have now missed 30 minutes or 60 minutes of their reading, math, social studies, science, social skills, speech, OT. This is critical. We are not operating under the federal law, IDEA, which states that our students with disabilities are to be receiving free and appropriate, let me underline that word, education. DPS currently has 86 EC positions, 44 teaching positions, 42 supports. It is critical that we get the full funding. Thank you for your time this evening.
Ms. Kathleen, before you go, I'm going to call up the next group of folks, Herman Spurling, JB Hallen, and Kristy Clem, and Tammy Williams. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board and those in attendance. My name is Kathleen Osinski. Just as families have difficult decisions to keep them running smoothly as possible with inflation and the unknown future of their jobs, so too must this Board make difficult decisions. With the increase in taxes for current residents being proposed, the current programs must continue to be funded. We as a county must take care of the employees and citizens we currently have, rather than cut programs that work at this time. The schools and other buildings must be maintained. The inmates at our county jail must be treated with dignity as human beings. They deserve to have working lights, air conditioning, and security. Our students deserve to have qualified teachers in comfortable schools. This is not the time for risky and discretionary funding due to budget constraints. I am speaking, knowing that everything that is in here, that there are some cuts. I am speaking in favor of the budget as it is written. The Board has had a difficult task... speaking in favor of the budget as it is written. The Board has had a difficult task to write a budget with the lack of money coming from Washington and the state of North Carolina. Just as we, as people and our families, have had to make decisions and we can't get everything we want, I can't take the long vacations. I've resorted to camping. I love it and I'm going to continue to do so. We've had to say no to our children and unfortunately, this Board has to say no to some programs. Please use your knowledge so that it does not affect the current citizenry and employees of this county.
I'm Herman Sperling, 2628 Bloomsbury Manor Drive. Members of the Board, Madam Manager, Madam Attorney, and all of those in attendance, thank you for this opportunity. These are the times in good management they have to inform politics. We all want more and we all want to pay less. Many of us have ideas and prejudices and the only way to overcome emotion with judgment is by facing the facts. So here are some. Most economists predict that the United States economy will experience some degree of recession in the second half of this year. Our best chance of successfully weathering this difficult period will be by following our county manager's guidance, leveraging her proven expertise in budget management during economic downturns. The proposed budget provides a solid foundation for managing fiscal uncertainties ahead. Can you name anyone on this dais other than the county manager who has run budgets in a down economy? Durham Public Schools receives about 25% of its funding from Washington. Are there others who think that this funding is in jeopardy? And do we have a contingency plan prepared to address that potential downturn? Durham is not likely to be supported financially by our state legislature or federal government. Is there anyone in this room who disagrees that we, the people, who need to shoulder the burden? Duke University has already lost $400 million in funding resulting in lost jobs. Have you read the President's statement conveyed by WRAL which says, "Duke prepares for more layoffs. Employees call for transparency." EPA, HHS, and other federal offices in the Triangle are being all but defunded. Who here knows about families losing income and what that would mean to our local economy? Ladies and gentlemen, I would go on, but I trust my intended point has been made. Good management should result in curtailing discretionary spending and the risk of startup spending. Thank you, and please support the county manager's submission.
Good evening, County Commissioners. My name is JB Hallen. I was born and raised in Durham County and I am a proud product of Durham Public Schools. For the past seven years, I've served as a school social worker at Carrington Middle School and I am a proud member of our Workers Union, DAE. First of all, I want to express sincere gratitude for your commitment to raising the budget allocation for DPS to $13 million. That support matters. And tonight, I urge you to go the rest of the way. Approve the additional $3 million needed to fully meet the district's requests. I understand concerns about tax increases, but let's remember, this budget is not just about teachers. It supports a network of essential services critical to Durham's children's, Durham children's well-being, and social-emotional development. That includes the work of bus drivers, cafeteria workers, school social workers, and other support staff that are critical to children's well-being. Social workers serve some of Durham's most marginalized children and families. We help housing insecure families connect with shelters and long-term resources. We get students access to food, clothing, and emergency mental health care. We make referrals to outside agencies and support students who are dealing with crises. Some of us also train our fellow educators in social-emotional learning so that they can teach their kids skills that build resilient and thriving young people. This year, school social workers were excluded from Masters pay despite being impacted by the 2013 North Carolina General Assembly decision. Social workers need to be included for next year and not by drastically cutting pay of teachers who are already receiving it. Funding this $3 million isn't just about education. It's about care, equity, and access. It ensures DPS can staff social workers, bus monitors, and EC positions, roles that directly impact our most vulnerable students. Thank you all very much for your time.
Good evening. I'm Kristy Clem. I'm a physical therapist with Durham Public Schools, Wake County resident, and I say the same thing at the Wake meetings. I appreciate you all extending the budget for the schools and I am asking for it to be further extended for the full DPS ask. This year, I've probably served students in 14 different buildings, preschool outreach, homebound settings, students in general education classes, and those in separate special programs. Across the board in all those schools, all those different ages, there's not extra to be cut. There's not extra staff sitting around doing nothing. There's not extra materials, dusty in the corner. Across the board, there are needs. There's needs from safe fences on the playgrounds. There's needs from staff shortages. There's needs from bus drivers, safety assistants to get the children to school safely, EC teachers and safety, instructional assistants in those classrooms. We need the full budget ask to meet the needs of the Durham students. We are doing the best we can to hold things together with what we have and people show up day after day because they love the city and they love the students that are here, but that's not enough to hold it together. We need more to serve the students the best we can, to give them the best education and make sure they're safe and to have the social workers do what they need to do for social-emotional support. Unfortunately, I'm one of those classified people that had pay taken away last year. So I could speak to what it might mean to a teacher's with Masters pay who now gets that removed after a year. You make decisions when you get a salary increase to do things for your family and you don't expect that to be removed. There's nothing in this year's budget for classified pay. I understand that. But I continue to show up and I'm supporting my certified coworkers. Please do what you can to fully fund the schools. Thank you.
Good evening, County Commissioners. I appreciate taking up this time to hear my voice. My name is Tammy Williams and I am a bus driver and a proud DAE member. I am here tonight asking you all to fully fund the 16 million DPS budget request because DPS is in crisis. In transportation, we're losing people because the stress is not worth the pay. When we're down, drivers, it's strenuous on the rest of us because they expect us to cover extra routes, like me. I have three routes in the morning and in the afternoon. Because we are losing drivers, I have double load for one of my routes in the morning and in the afternoon for one school. And I'm not the only one. A double load means, I have, already said that, I'm sorry, and I have double loads and no monitor. Monitors support drivers and make it so that as a driver, I can focus on the road rather than on a student's behavior. I have some hard heads on my bus and because I don't have a monitor, I'm forced to write students up when there's bad behavior. The monitors that we do have should be included in the 200 a month supplement drivers are receiving. Together, we ensure students get to and from school safely and we deserve the right to make a living wage. I am here tonight with my three grandkids because my daughter works late and I can't afford childcare. It shouldn't be that way. They keep saying there's no money, but then, why did you install radios on the bus that no one uses? Why did you buy charging stations for electric buses when they aren't being used? Because of the work we did this year organizing with our union, DPS is actually funding some good things in this year's budget. Things that will actually help address the crisis in our school, like a 200-month supplement for drivers. Although we want monitors included and they were left out, Masters pay for everyone and a raise for certified staff. Not only that, but we won the first meet and confer policy in the state. With more budget transparency and workers' voice, our union can help ensure that every penny is spent where-
Thank you, Ms. Tammy.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for coming and providing your public comment and engaging with us throughout this budget cycle. Now, let's see. Should we vote on these items individually or move through the second one and then the next item is the, okay? At the end. Okay. So then I will see, is there any motion folks want to make on the budget? Yeah, after.
Madam Chair, I would entertain a motion to approve the adoption of the FY 2526 budget ordinance.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Jacobs, second by Commissioner Burton. Are there any further discussion? Right, being known, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The budget is adopted. I'll now bring it to the Board to provide, I know everyone has comments they would like to make. Commissioner Burton requested to go first. I'll go from this end and then Commissioner Burton, Dr. Lee, then Commissioner Valentine.
Thank you so much.
That's fine. That's fine.
I'm looking in all directions.
I'll take it.
And then Commissioner Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say that this was a very tough budget. My first budget as a county commissioner. And I'll explain why, but this was, is my sixth month as a Durham County Commissioner. And when one is running for elected office and eventually elected, you are elected as an individual. But to truly be good at this role, you have to work collaboratively with fellow commissioners and with the staff who carry out this work. I want to say thank you to my fellow commissioners that we were able to work on this very tough budget and we didn't, you know, knock it out. I mean, but we worked collaboratively. Thank you so much. And I really want to say a big thank you to Durham County staff who worked tirelessly behind the scenes, who have helped me with learning Durham County government as a new commissioner. I want to give a big thank you to Kiara Doyle, our taxes administrator. I want to say thank you for the very hard work that you did with this reappraisal process and your team. You did an outstanding job going out into the communities to talk with people in Durham about the process and also letting them know what they had available to them to get some tax relief because we have to continue to spread the word about our low-income tax relief program. So thank you so much. I want to say I'm so grateful to the leadership of Monica Wallace, Clerk to the Board of County Commissioners, and our Deputy Clerk Macy O'Carlton, as well as the dynamic trio of Tanya De La Santos, Shauna C. Wardrick, and Georgina Nicole Moreno. It is so reassuring to know that we have such a great team of people who help us as commissioners to make the load a little bit lighter as we go out into the broader Durham community to serve. Thank you to our Assistant County Managers who work with the departments under their leadership, Dewayne Brinson, Joanne Pierce, Tammy Hall, and Julio Delgado. Thank you so much for answering my questions about all the county departments as I learn about the myriad ways that Durham County Government serve our residents. I want to say a big thank you to Chief of Staff Shannon Trapp, who also makes sure I have what I need to do this work effectively, as well as Deborah Craig Ray, Randy Jones, and Dawn Dudley in the Public Information Office. I really want to acknowledge the amazing work of the Budget Managers Services Team under the leadership of Director Keith Lane, Assistant Director David Aids, as well as Heather Walker for her amazing reports, as well as Interim Chief Financial Officer Crystal Lee Wright and her team. The behind-the-scenes work that your two departments do to ensure that Durham County is on solid financial ground is remarkable and greatly appreciated. Thank you to Deputy County Manager Maurice Jones. I really appreciate the fact that you took the time to sit with me to explain about all the things happening in Research Triangle Park and how business and symptoms are done in Durham. And finally, to our County Manager Claudia Hager. For, yes, for meeting with me, answering my calls at all hours of the night and weekends when I had questions about the budget and how we could creatively and find resources. Like I said earlier, this was a tough budget. I voted for it. And even though I wanted more for Durham Public Schools because I know what happens in those buildings every single day, every single day. I know how hard my colleagues, my former colleagues, work. I did it for 30 years. But I also realize that with this reappraisal of property in Durham County, and I've been a property owner since 1996, this is the highest I have seen property values in Durham County. In some areas of our county, property values increased by 162%. We had the loss of federal ARPA funds and the uncertainty of what is happening at the federal level with the potential loss of Medicaid funding and SNAP. It was important that we can continue to make sure county services were funded in order to keep core government services for our people. County Manager Hager recommended the property tax be increased by 3.5 cents from the neutral rate. My main priority was to make sure that Durham Public Schools was paying their employees, their workers, and that they received raises in the form of increasing the Certified Teacher Supplement, the Masters Pay, and monthly supplement for DPS bus drivers to make sure there was enough funding for EC students. We are giving DPS an additional $2.57 million above what the county manager recommended to make those things happen. Also in this budget, we are giving DPS an additional one-time funding of $10 million for any capital improvement needs that they may have this year for a total of $15 million. I'm staying optimistic that we can get another bond on the ballot for next year to fix aging buildings with the average building in DPS being 59 years old. The budget also continues to invest in pre-K, the Haytar Reborn Justice Movement, a program to help justice-involved individuals acclimate to society, and funding and expanding Project Build to help children from ages 10 to 13 to keep away from gangs, and funding 12 new positions for EMS and five ambulances to serve a rapidly growing county. The Commissioners work collaboratively and found in our existing budget to keep the manager's recommended tax increase to 3.5 cents. But in closing, we need your help. The legislators in Raleigh are underfunding our public schools. Many of you already know this. And as a county, we have stepped up repeatedly to make sure our public schools, our students have what they need, not waiting for the folks on Jones Street to do the right thing. But this being my first budget, I realize due to charters and vouchers and the loss of federal ESER and ARPA funding and other uncertainties at the federal level, the next few years are going to be extremely challenging. And 2026 is an election year and we have the opportunity to make things different. If you have the chance to go to other counties, particularly counties where the seats are flippable, door knock, what have you, please do it because it's harder and more challenging for Durham County to carry the cost of funding our public schools. But we will do whatever we can to make sure our schools are funded. So thank you for giving me this privilege, Chair Alom, and I yield back to you.
I'm not really sure how to follow that. All of that information is covered and everything.
There's a reason she asked to go first.
Right, yeah. So I'll say ditto. And no, I really appreciate this budget cycle. This is my first time on this side of the dais as, during a budget cycle. I've been on the other side. And I enjoy this process because I entered this in a, in a way of a learning process for me. And that is to learn all of the different functions and pieces of Durham County's government that the county Commissioners have to fund. It's easy to- It’s easy to think about your area and how you need to fund that, and that is your job. That is everyone’s job to ask for budget. Is, I do, there is a quote that I recently started living by, “It’s not your job to tell yourself no.” So it is your job to ask for what you believe you need. It’s our job to figure out how much of that we can fund. I appreciate this process. I appreciate the staff and their patience in answering the questions and same question, you know, different days, same question over and over again. That is difficult, I get it. We’re new commissioners, there’s three of us that are new, and it just takes time. That is why I felt this was a really important year to learn, learn about it. I am also a property owner, and we did see our valuation go very sky-high. And so I understand the challenges around that, but I’ve always advocated for schools. I’ve always advocated for what the schools need and how we can fund that. And I deeply appreciate the work that the staff and the county manager did, the gymnastics that was able to be done to add $2.5 million on to the initial recommendation. I initially thought their initial recommendation would be smaller, and so we were able to, I think, fund in a way that, as best we could. I appreciate my fellow commissioners for taking my calls and answering my questions, and I feel very happy about where we landed with the ability of not raising taxes more than the 3.5 recommended rate. It was a little iffy here and there, but I think we did as good as we could with what we’re being dealt with, the financial headwinds and the economic headwinds that are heading our way. I look forward to going through this process again in a more informed way because I was learning this year, and really measuring how we perform as an organization as far as the individual parts and how do we make the budget work. But for this budget, again, I appreciate all of the help. I appreciate all of the knowledge that was shared, the institutional knowledge from my more seasoned colleagues, and I just, I appreciate it and I look forward to seeing this budget work for us. Thank you.
So, let me first say thank you to the county manager and Commissioner Burton, you named everybody in the room. So county manager, your entire team across government, thank you. And so as a new county commissioner, I can definitely say that you have helped the learning curve thus far, and I look forward to the way forward. So budgets are value documents, and I think that my colleagues and I, at this particular moment in time, value the need to be smart with public dollars. And let me acknowledge that every department across the government, including the Sheriff’s Office, Durham Public Schools, have legitimate requests for additional funding for personnel, for capital needs, and I’m cognizant of that. I think tonight’s budget represents a reset from an environment where there was an abundance of federal funds that you know have all dried up, to one that reflects the current political and economic environment of uncertainty that we face, one that is ever-changing, I would say on a daily basis, but actually it’s minute by minute in our country. We were able to provide, as one of my colleagues has already said, some additional funds for Durham Public Schools. We were able to find some money to continue our commitment to pre-K here in Durham County, something that we said, all of us said, that we were committed to. And we found a way to adequately fund local government, and we did that without asking the taxpayer to take on any additional burdens. And so I’m comfortable with my vote today, and I look forward to the opportunity to learn more in my capacity as your county commissioner to find additional ways to support government. So I got in this role because I believe government is a good for our society. And so we need your help in that process, and so I look forward to the way forward. Thank you.
I think you’re going to hear a lot of repetition tonight, which in a lot of ways I think is a good sign. It’s the embodiment of the consensus that we have developed on our board through this budget process. So this is my 13th budget, and I believe that voting on the budget is the most important and the most difficult thing that I do as a county commissioner and as an elected representative of the people of Durham. And in many ways, this was probably the most difficult budget, not only because of all of the incredible needs, but also because of the reality of the fiscal constraints that we are under right now. So it made it very, very difficult. And this budget is also a reflection of many tough decisions that were made by many people along the way, starting with our frontline staff and department heads, county leadership, the budget staff, financial staff, our county manager, but also our partners, and I want to represent Superintendent Dr. Lewis for being here tonight, our partners who also came into this process, having already made very difficult decisions as well. In the face of realities of decreasing sales tax revenues, increased cost of services, personnel, infrastructure, that all come along with growth, decreasing state support for our schools, and economic uncertainty at the federal level for the funding of basic public health and social services needs at the county level, our board had to juggle many factors in this year’s budget process. Where we landed tonight is a budget that I could support, and I again want to thank Durham County Manager Claudia Hager and Budget Director Keith Lane and their teams for helping us develop a budget that keeps Durham County on solid financial ground while ensuring that we meet the most vital needs of our community and keep Durham moving forward with a budget that reflects our board’s policy priorities. And what you see tonight is a budget document, as was said, that keeps the proposed tax rate increase at 3.5 cents per $100 valuation on top of the new revenue-neutral rate, tax rate of 51.92 cents. Our board recognizes that the increase in property tax values and accompanying increase in property taxes will be a challenge for many low and fixed-income residents, and we made it a priority to not raise taxes further. Our single largest budget priority continues, continues to be support for education. We found a way to increase Durham Public Schools’ funding by $2.75 million in addition to the manager’s proposed $10.4 million in new funding for a total of $13.5 million, I’m sorry, $13.15 million in new money, new funding. This will cover the projected $6.35 million in the continuation budget needs of DPS and also provide $6.8 million for salary supplements, Master’s Pay, exceptional children, and bus drivers, priority our board intends to support. This will bring the increased local funding for Durham Public Schools to $224 million plus $77 million in indirect funding for things like SROs, public health nurses, and debt service. This budget reflects resident concerns and key investments our board will continue to make in the people of Durham. We step up to meet the growing demand of EMS with 12 new positions and five new ambulances. We keep investing in the future of our children, maintaining more than $8.7 million for our transformational Durham pre-K. We ensure residents have a pipeline to good jobs in Durham with our $12.6 million investment in Durham Tech and $500,000 for the Back to Work and Bulls Program and $2.02 million in the Durham Scholarship Program for all high school students. We are investing more than $4 million in a better transit system, and we are providing a safety net for our most vulnerable residents, supporting our low-income homeowner relief program, eviction diversion, food security, and expanding project build, our youth gang reduction program. We face uncertainty in the year ahead, but what I am certain about is that the Durham County budget will put us in a strong position to weather the storms that may come our way. And I am certain that Durham stakeholders will pull together and do our best to take care of each other in the days ahead. Thank you to our community for your input and engagement in this budget process. Thank you, Manager Hager and Durham County staff, for the guidance, expertise, and information you provide to us as elected officials to help us make the most informed decisions possible. Thank you to the members of our board for the opportunity for me to listen and learn from each of you. For the spirit of respect, advocacy, and compromise, I believe that this is what good governance looks like, and I am proud to join with all of you supporting this budget tonight.
Thank you to all my colleagues. I’ll share my comments, and I’ll let Manager Hager close us out. I want to say ditto, 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 ditto to so much that has been said, and I won’t take up a lot of your time of sitting here like, scratch that, scratch that, since that’s been said, but really just want to take a huge moment to extend not just thanks, but congratulations to County Manager Hager because this is her first budget as our permanent county manager, not just as interim or acting. And she truly, as you’ve heard, led us through this process with so much strength, care, and clarity. So thank you so much, Manager Hager. And if you know Manager Hager, you know there’s this grace about her that she brings to her work, and it especially shows during such difficult conversations of the budget and such a tough economic climate. And I want to thank our brilliant budget staff. Our budget staff, can you guys please stand up to be recognized too? If you want to be funded, that’s who you should befriend. Thank you so much for putting in the long hours, the detailed analysis, and the balancing acts of spreadsheets and to get us to, being able to make the hard decisions that we have to, and making sure that every dollar that our residents entrust us with gets put to good use and provides value to our communities. And, you know, Commissioner Burton named everyone, so if I don’t name you, that means Commissioner Burton already named you. So just thank you to every county staff member and department for also helping us come to this budget cycle a little more fluidly. We asked our budget staff, Manager Hager asked budget staff, to come to us with a little bit of a tightened budget already, and that was difficult for them to do because they do provide vital and important services, and we want to recognize that we know the work that you do is vital and important, and asking you to present those tightened budget to us doesn’t mean that we don’t value the work that you do and share with us and our residents, but it just means that we’re all in this tight, difficult position. And we also, as Commissioner Jacobs mentioned, Commissioner Valentine, we can’t ignore what’s happening at the federal level right now, that we’re seeing real threats to cuts of vital services and programs that support housing, food assistance, Medicaid, education, public health, literally everything that our Durham County residents rely on. And those cuts, if they go through, many of them which already have, they won’t just stay in Washington. They’re going to land right here in Durham on the shoulders of our residents and on the budgets of the county, the state, and the city. And so when the federal government steps back, like, local governments are expected to step in, and often without the resources to do it. So that’s the reality we’re bracing for, and there are so many programs that all of us wanted to be able to fund and support. And I really want to give a kudos to our new colleagues on this board because this is my fifth budget on the board, but I remember my first budget, I came in bright-eyed and bushy-tailed, expecting, you know, I want to fund this program, I want to do this, this, and this, and I know and I wish that y’all had the opportunity to be able to have a first budget like that as well, but I respect immensely the way that y’all came in and saw, okay, this is a difficult cycle. We have all these amazing ideas, but we also need to balance. So I really just want to applaud the way that y’all navigated this first budget. It’s really amazing that Durham County has leaders such as y’all up here on this dais as well, as well as Commissioner Jacobs. And, you know, you’ve heard already how much the budget is, including, I just want to again emphasize that increase of $15.927 million for DPS, that’s going to raise our per pupil spending to $5,561 in direct spend funding from the county. And also the supplementary assistance for DPS will draw from the remaining ARPA resources, including $723,000 earmarked for pre-K programming at the newly constructed Murray Massenberg, and the $3 million in ARPA funding that we’re doing to offset infrastructure. This means more resources in our classrooms, more support for educators, and more stability for our students and their families. And as Commissioner Valentine said, you know, these budgets are a moral document, and it’s one that each of us and our county staff and our commissioners, we all made grounded in love. Love for Durham and for the people that make this community what it is. So again, I want to thank everyone so much for engaging in the budget process and working with us through this difficult year, and I implore you to join in the actions that Commissioner Burton has shared with us. Go to your legislators at the state level to the federal level. The commissioners across the state are going to be meeting with legislators tomorrow and Wednesday to talk to them about our priorities. And it’s important, if you have neighbors who are, may not be in a county as Democrat, or friends who aren’t in a county that’s not as Democratic as ours, tell them to talk to their county commissioners to go to their legislators because their county commissioners are facing the same struggles that we are, even if they aren’t Democrats, if they’re red, blue, purple, whatever they are, they’re facing the same financial struggles. So have them talk to their legislators as well. And we’re going to keep doing the work here in Durham to keep fighting for our residents and our neighbors, and I appreciate all the ways that y’all have held us accountable and trusted us with this great responsibility. Thank you. Manager Hager?
Good evening. You know, we began this budget process with request totaling about $55 million above available revenues. That’s a huge gap. Closing that gap meant that we could not fund many important priorities, all of them organized in a way that would have pushed us a little further along as we served the over 300 and nearly 350,000...
over three hundred and nearly three hundred and fifty thousand residents. This physical environment has presented so many unprecedented challenges and lots of uncertainty. But I will say, I am proud that we were able to present a recommended budget that addressed many core areas to keep the community focused and addressing some of the highest priorities and needs. I am also confident, although we are in a time where there's lots of unknowns, that we will work together and get through whatever challenges come our way. That is who we are as a community. I will not have long remarks, but I do just want to thank the board for your support and your encouragement through all of this, because this, for me, has been the toughest budget season I've ever experienced in my, my life. I've been in finance and public policy, I've dealt with recessions, I've never had an experience where there have been so many shifts and so many huge unknowns impacting so many individuals in very vulnerable spaces. That's tough, when you wonder if some people may or may not have housing or food, if they will have the dollars that are needed to support key areas for our public schools. We can, in Durham, do as best that we can, but it's partnerships with so many stakeholders that develop this community and allow us to present the budget that we did present. I want to extend gratitude again to the commissioners. I thank you for your trust and interesting staff. I also want to thank the executive leadership team, the department heads, and the staff, and I always give shouts out to the two thousand-plus employees who are colleagues, who are at the closest of the work in making sure things happen. I thank you for your commitment. Many of you may not come into the chambers to see these messages, but we are so grateful for all that you do. I want to say a special recognition to, I will say, one of the hardest tax administrators probably in the world, Mr. Kiar Dole. He's been out in the trenches communicating what it means with this reappraisal process, and his team has been tireless in trying to make sure that our taxpayers are aware what the values of their properties are, and if there is an appeal, that you do that. And I believe the appeal date, the last date for that is on the sixteenth. I see, all those meanings I remember are set in. So, if you do have concerns about your value, please make sure that you send in an appeal. We want to make sure that it's correct. So, I did want to pause and give that acknowledgement as well. I also want to thank all the community partners from the city of Durham, to Durham Technical Community College, to Durham Public Schools Superintendent, thank you. This is a tough year. You have done a phenomenal job in your role as superintendent, and whatever comes our way together, I know we will work through it. So, I thank you for your partnership. I also finally want to acknowledge the exceptional work of our Budget and Services Management Services Department. Thank all of you for what you do, and Keith, I thank you for your outstanding leadership as well as we've gone through the process. I would pause and say, Keith, if you have some remarks, I will yield. I know he would. Yes, I will give my time.
The sprint, the sprint to the mic.
Thank you so much.
Now, really, I just wanted to thank the manager. It has been a lovely experience this year talking with someone who has budget knowledge and has that communication, so working with her through a very tough budget process was exceptional for our office. Want to thank our office. You said leadership on my part. I don't have to lead a whole lot, because we have a great group, and they don't get enough recognition, so every time there's an opportunity, I like to point it out. That's all I got to say. Thank you very much. Commissioners, also thank you for listening. You did a lot of listening, and that was really appreciated.
Well, that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you all so much again. Now, we move on to our next ordinance for adoption, the adoption of the FY 2025-26 Annual Opioid Settlement Fund Ordinance and Related Spending Resolutions. Wait, do we, wait, we have to adopt the fee schedule separately for the budget? Or, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to, going backwards, to adopt the fee schedule for the budget. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved by Commissioner Jacobs, second by Dr. Lee. I keep looking. All in favor, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is adopted. Now, we move on to the adoption of the FY 26 Annual Opioid Settlement Fund.
I move that we adopt FY 2025-26 Annual Opioid Settlement Fund Ordinance and Related Spending Resolutions.
So moved.
No, second.
Oh, second.
Just to clarify, so you made the motion for the resolution and the ordinance, or one, just the resolution right now?
Just the, just the resolution.
Okay, all right. Okay, moved by Commissioner Valentine, second by Commissioner Burton. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution is adopted, and now we have an ordinance. What do we have?
I'm of approval. SFCU 26 Annual Budget Ordinance for Opioid Settlement Funds.
Moved by Dr. Lee, second by Commissioner Valentine. Any discussion?
I just want to clarify, fund ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
I said it backwards.
Annual Budget Ordinance for Opioid Settlement Funds, yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we approve that. And now, the board is requested to adjourn into closed session for item related to General Statute 143-318.11A5.
I move that we move to closed session.
Okay.
I'll second.
Moved by Commissioner Burton, second by Vice Chair Dr. Lee. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in closed session. Thank you, everyone, so much for joining.